It's for sale. It's it's for sale, goes to good cause. Alright. Alright, appreciate your patience as we work out some technical challenges and it's for us always on the spot for that. But like welcome you to our October ninth meeting, the work session of the White County Board of Education. We'll be covering some of our consent agendas tonight, get a few reports from various reports that we do from month to month. Would like to recognize and we'll do this more formally at the regular meeting. But Ms. Kylie Odell is here with us tonight. She's our junior representative for White County High School, excuse me, junior, senior, hold on, let me start. She's a junior, but she's our student representative serving on our board this term. And so we're just excited to get to know you and your participation in our efforts here. So we're gonna start going through our consent agenda items for tonight. Those include our minutes from our work session on September eleventh as well as the minutes from our regular board meeting on September eleventh. So I ask you to review those if there's any corrections, changes, clarifications that need to be made, please, please let that be known at this time. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, on which document? Alright, so Ms. Sims, you can make that clerical. You can make that clerical change for us on the work session minutes and we'll trust that that will get done. Sorry, Miss Office, I mean, Miss Officer, not bad. Any other changes, corrections, clarifications? Um, then I'm gonna go through the, as it's listed in the consent agenda on our, consent agenda on our regular agenda. And policy report, that would be Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, anything on policy that we need to discuss?
Not.
Okay, thank you. Then the next one would be maintenance report and I think Mr. Alley's here had anything to report maintenance wise? Okay, thank you, Mr. Alley. Board members said, just want to draw attention to the report that we had from our directors last Saturday. And said, last, last month, Ms. Alley made a presentation to us about some board thinking. He's, he and his department, Mr. Drunberger, thinking about our district facilities assessment. And just remind you that they're, they're, they're gonna go back and do a little bit more research. We should have some information from them about direction they may wanna present that we, that we consider. An upcoming meeting, but just wanna give you a, just a little heads up that that's not, not, not a dead item. They're just going back and revisiting that, so appreciate them doing that. Anything else for maintenance? Okay, then we'll look at our budget report, Miss Officer.
So this report is outlining the financial position of flat town school system for three ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The month of September marks the end of the first quarter of this fiscal year and provides a clear picture of the early year. Overall revenues of the school funds total seven million, five hundred thirty nine thousand, three hundred sixty five dollars. While expenditures and expenditures total twelve million, three hundred forty two thousand, seven hundred and two. The combined fund balance across all the funds stands at fifteen million, six hundred fifty one, seven hundred sixty six. Compared to the beginning bound of twenty million, four hundred fifty five thousand, three hundred sixty four. It's not unusual though to see this decrease in the projected fund balance at this point in the year. Because the avenue, the revenue collections are typically very limited during this quarter of this full year. So overall, we're standing good and remember that because we are having some of the. Still having some of the expenditures due to the Tennessee Education Freedom Acts bonuses in there. It does look a little off, but again, the significant increase in these salaries and benefits due to the bonus that was made in August. The PISA revenues hold five million, seven hundred seventy six dollars, seven, nine, seventy through September, which is lower than the prior year's peak. By twenty nine thousand, nine hundred ten. So this trend while concerning is good. The school federal projects funding for its no revenue through September, which is not unusual again at this point. A year deep in timing, federal reimbursement budget. The central cafeteria fund is showing healthy slight increase of point six three percent from last year. While expenditures are at fifty two percent of their budget and that is reflecting that normal front end loaded purchasing activity. Which is very typical for this program, thank you, Miss Savage and your team for being good stewards. Overall, the White County school system appears to remain in a sound financial condition through this first quarter of the fiscal year. Revenues are tracking in line with expectations and expenditures are consistent with normal operational patterns at this point of this full year.
Thank you, Miss Officer. Board members, any questions, comments on the budget report? Mr. Markham, a question, do you think government shutdown will have any impact on funding for any of our programs? Okay, so we're gonna say no news is good news, but something that we all should probably just be aware of that it could hopefully not.
Chairman, I received an email from the commissioner, most of our grant funding that came through the federal government. They've assured us that those are safe and will continue to be able to seek reimbursements for those throughout this time. As I said, anything can change and as, as things go on longer, there could be changes. But the initial response from the Department of Education was that we shouldn't see any initial impact in the school system.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding our budget? Okay, if, if not, then we'll move on to our budget amendments and transfers. So it's like we have three, I'll let our director speak to, speak to those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, let's see if I gave them the right order here. We have general purpose fund one forty one, budget amendment, an amount of four hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and seven cents. This is the money that's left over in this, in the CTE Innovative School Models Grant, kind of somewhat carryover from last year. The largest amount in there, two hundred forty seven thousand dollars is for capital building improvements. We are still trying to work with TCAT Upper Kremlin to work on that culinary spot in the back of the career academy. They're still working on getting some legislative support for some grant money there too. If that falls through, then plan B is to renovate existing culinary space in the existing high school academic. So we're, we're holding on hope that that's still gonna happen, but if it falls through, we do have plan B. And that's why that, that number is so large, still unspent. Also in school fund one forty one, we have a hundred thousand dollars. There's a actual, the state has actually created a coding line for paid parental leave. And so this is just moving it from one account number to another. And then finally, we have a placeholder amount to just an amount of ten dollars in GP Fund one forty one. This is for expenditures, expenditure category in regular and special ed to account for expenditures that might be required to be posted by the state for PISA on behalf payments. So it's just money that we have to show in our accounting process, so we have this money there in these line items. In the event that those transfer monies come through, we have a place to put them.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for, for Mr. Drunberger.
Yes, go ahead.
On the Innovative School Models Grant, that was a million dollars in the beginning, correct? Okay. We did, we did the greenhouse, if I'm not mistaken, at the middle school. What are the other projects that we did through that Innovative School Models Grant? I know we're still with the two hundred forty for the culinary, but can you kind of give us an idea of what, what was used, what the rest of that money was used for?
I would have to go back and look at all those expenditures. I know that we bought a lot of farm equipment and tractor for, for FFA. There were a number of different things that were purchased for, I think, for your media, got some things in there. There, there's a long list that I'd have to pull up if we were sent, that Mr. Ward had sent us. But culinary was set to be a big part of that and so that's, it's still set aside for that. But I, I can pull that back up and send that to you. Ms. Fowler?
I just got a question, can you explain to us what the other contracted services are, who got that money?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Markham on that. That's seventy six, one hundred, capital outlay, amount of thirty two hundred dollars. Eleven hundred and forty, which is seven oh seven and three ninety nine. Just, yeah, just for clarity, these are just budgeted items that we expect, not monies that have already been spent. So in a budget item, you wouldn't necessarily have a placeholder for who that monies go to, is that correct, Mr. Markham? Thank you. Good questions, any other questions for, regarding our budget amendments and transfers? Okay, if not, we'll move on to review the personnel report. Personnel report was included in our packet, shows the cumulative total of applicants that we received, applications we received this year. Along with interviews and actual hires, just for clarity, because applicant number is high. And this would be accumulation of all applicants that have come in from all the various sources where we might post positions. And so they can come in at any time, whether we have an open position or not. And so that's, that's just accumulation of that. That's the reason why that number is high, that doesn't necessarily reflect that we have that many positions open. But just the number of applications that are seen from various sources. So any questions on our personnel report, including the personnel changes and new hires, terminations and transfers?
I will say something here, Mr. Chair, if I can. It, it's very positive to see that out of fourteen hundred and sixteen. I will say something here, Mr. Chair, if I can. It's very positive to see that out of fourteen hundred and sixteen applicants that we've received and only six no-shows for, for interviews. That's, that's a, that's a, that's a good, I mean fifty-two interviews and only six no-shows. That's a, that's a positive if you want, you want my opinion. So yeah, that's a, that's great. We're getting those folks to come and not just, not just dropping out for no reason.
That's right. So yeah, I would think that would be positive. Do you think that would be positive as well? Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, Mr. Markham. Thanks for pointing that out. All right. If no other questions on personnel report, then we'll move over to the threat assessment, and this is threat assessment for the month of September. You can see there were six, six cases that were open, five of them closed, one of them still, still, still open but is to be monitored. So any questions, comments on our threat assessment report? Okay, if not, we'll, that, those are all the items that are on our consent agenda. And board members, just as a reminder, if there's anything from there that needs to be pulled out for further discussion, then, and do that when we consider, after we approve our agenda for tonight and when we get the consent agenda, can pull that out. We'd add that to new business if you so choose. Otherwise, all the items will be considered, approved by a consent vote. And we'll, we'll consider those items closed or approved. Just as you're looking through the agenda for tonight, just as a reminder, our school spotlight this year. We're looking at Artist of the Year and wanting to focus on the theme of artists and celebrating those, celebrating those that are involved in fine arts. Very important to our culture and appreciate the people that are gifted in those, with those skills. So that's, that's gonna be one of our agenda items tonight. Also, we, we have a couple of items here, just to give you a little preview on the file hall, file hall property at Conde Croft. Then we're gonna circle back on the discussion on the teacher's bonus and the snow day for pay for, for staff. Those are a couple of things that bring your attention to. That information's been provided in your packet. So when we come to those items, if you have any questions, comments, we'll engage in discussion on, on those when it's in that appropriate time. Do want to appreciate your efforts on Tuesday, our work session on Tuesday night as we work to try to come up with a strategic direction for our, for our district. And as we go through that, that process, appreciate your work as we try to steal information, take information, feedback that we've gotten. Hopefully work towards having something that we can present on in December and then work towards getting that approved and getting a plan in place for that. With that being said, I know that I discussed with you Tuesday night or tried to articulate kind of the process, steps of what, what we're doing. When you go from a SWOT analysis and then it says, okay, what are you trying to do with that information? Turning weaknesses into strengths, trying to minimize threats and turn those into, and take advantage of opportunities that are both of the latter, which are external to our district, but relevant nonetheless. I printed off just for your, for your, just for your, your review, just to draft, it's just kind of summarizing notes that we had from our work session Tuesday. And so I just printed those off. Just wanted to give you a copy and then there's really no action for us to take on this until we have our next scheduled work session to discuss this. But just wanted to try to help provide a little clarity to you on what the, what it is we're working towards. So if you have any questions on that, that's pretty basic from the standpoint of how most vision and mission planning, steps that they follow. Then if they pick a vision, establish your mission, come up with a strategic objective that covers a longer period, a period of time. And then the tactical objectives that you want to, want to accomplish on shorter iterations in order to make sure you're working towards your direction. So put that together for you, just for your information, no action, but you'll probably see us working off that again. It's, it's just basically just format of where we're, where we're trying to move towards. So that was for your information. Anything else we need to address during this time before we start our regular meeting? Mr. D?
Chairman, if I could go back to budget amendments, Ms. Fowler had some questions. Mr. Markham has provided me with some answers here in those other contracted services categories. For the capital outlay one, that was for electrical and plumbing installation for the Washington environs purchase for health sciences. And then the one for vocational education was field trip to National Zoo for non-traditional career exploration. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Markham.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well then we'll turn our work session and reconvene at six o'clock for a regular meeting. Thank you.
If everyone would please stand. We're gonna let our newest Nana on the board, Ms. Officer, lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Ms. Officer, and congratulations to you and your family for your exciting past few days. Again, we would like to welcome everyone here tonight to our meeting, board members, staff, members of the public. Happy to have you here as we conduct the business of the White County School District. Before we consider tonight's agenda, I just want everyone to note the following. The Tennessee Code Annotated and Board Policy fourteen hundred states that every meeting of the board is open to the public except where while asked for a closed session. The agenda for the board meetings are posted on the district's website at www dot whitecoastschools dot net. And the agendas are posted at least three days prior to each meeting. The Public Acts of two thousand twenty-three, chapter number three hundred, and Board Policy fourteen oh four requires for each meeting agenda to include an item reserved for public comment. As well as the conditions under which those wishes to comment will be recognized. A sign up sheet is made available prior to beginning of each regular meeting. Individuals who have signed up prior to the start of the meeting will speak to speak will be recognized in the order listed on the sign up sheet at the point in the agenda designated for public comment. Board meetings are streamed with the help of our central office technology staff for live or recorded viewing. Links are provided on the district websites, and attending or speaking during tonight's meeting implies consent that comments and appearances can be used. So before we consider tonight's agenda, I'd like for anyone on the board that might have a conflict of interest on any of the agenda items being considered tonight, please let that be known now.
Mr. Chair, as I do each and every month, no item on the agenda tonight is a conflict of interest for me. Just for public record, my wife is an educator in this school system. But the views and the opinions that you hear from me tonight are solely for what's best for our students, staff, and the betterment of this district.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a conflict of interest with one item on tonight's agenda, that's item number ten. I will recuse myself in both discussion and in decision making process for this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Officer.
Chairman, I also have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So Ms. Sims, let the minutes reflect that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Officer, and Mr. Smith all indicated that they have spouses working for the district. Nothing on the agenda for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Smith constitutes a conflict. Ms. Officer did indicate that she will be recusing herself from the. Ms. Officer did indicate that she will be recusing herself from discussion and vote on agenda item number ten. So thank you for those disclosures. So, board members, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda presented tonight. Had to review that over prior to the start of tonight's meeting. So this time I'd entertain a motion for approval for tonight's meeting agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McDonald, that was the second. Second by Mr. Smith. In discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda items, these items were reviewed with, the board reviewed these during our work session prior to tonight's meeting. It covered the meeting minutes from a work session and board meeting on September eleventh. There was no policy report that was, that was, no items on the policy to be reported. We had a brief update from our maintenance, from Mr. Alley. We did review the district's budget, and as things stand right now, healthy as far as our financials go. There were three budget amendments and transfers that were reviewed, and we also reviewed our personnel report and our threat assessment report. So, board members, this being a consent agenda, this item being a consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove any item for separate discussion? Okay, if not, if there are no objections, the consent agenda will be adopted by unanimous vote as presented. Any objections? Okay, hearing no objections, consent agenda is adopted. So next item on our agenda is our school spotlight. This year, we are focusing the school spotlight on recognizing the students that are engaged in the fine arts throughout our district. So each, each board meeting between now and through April, we will be recognizing students from the various schools in our district and celebrating those involved in fine arts. So tonight, we are privileged to have Mr. Murray that's going to be presenting because we're gonna be recognizing students from the middle school. So, Mr. Murray, for yours.
Thank you. So we first want to thank you guys for allowing us to celebrate a few of our students tonight. We asked our fine arts teachers to nominate some students to recognize and celebrate. Dr. Amaral apologizes that he not be here tonight. This is anniversary, and so we had to make that decision to be with the wife tonight. And so we want to recognize first, his selection was Mr. George Mees. And he writes, "It is with his sincere pleasure to nominate George Mees for the Artist of the Year Award to represent our White County Middle School Band Program." He did apologize for not being able to be here today. George is a great multi-instrument player who brings energy, positive attitude, and musicianship to the classroom. George is always one of the first students into the band room in the morning and one of the last ones out. He's eager to learn, help, and even entertain as he is. He wears his armor every day by being accountable, respectful, motivated, organized, and responsible. Thank you, George, for helping making the White County Middle School Band Program a success. Your work ethic is seen and admired. Next up, Ms. Nicole Farley chose Ms. Layla Simmons to be recognized because of her excellence in many different forms of art. In class, she would always go above and beyond the requirements for the assignments. The artwork she created in her class showed great skill and creativity because of her dedication and desire to. She would always show, Farley, her drawings, paintings, and crocheted projects that she made at home. They were all outstanding. Back in September, Layla entered work into the fair and received one second place and two first place awards. And her work was even chosen to be entered into the state fair competition. She also recently sold her first painting, and I know that as time goes on, she will only get better. And Farley expects great things from Layla. And now Ms. Beth Delk will talk about her.
I nominated Dalton Woody to be recognized tonight by the school board because he truly embodies what it means to be a dedicated and talented vocalist. He consistently goes above and beyond, whether it is auditioning for solos, on our choirs, or performing in the talent show at the middle school. But really, what really stands out about Dalton is his attitude. He's dependable, he's humble, and always willing to help others. His love of music and his positive spirit make him a joy to have in class and a wonderful representative of our choir program at WCMS. Dalton Woody.
Thank you. We had one other candidate, but he can.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murray, Ms. Delk, before y'all sit down, and for George and Layla and Dalton, would you please come up forward? We're gonna take this recess, and so that way we can get a few good pictures, and we can put them through our various social platforms. So we take a recess for pictures. Parents and grandparents, if you want to take pictures, you're more than welcome. Our guests, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you do have previous obligations, you're more than welcome to leave. But we will, this time, come back, call our meeting back to order. So, Mr. Murray, Ms. Delk, thank you very much, and all those at middle school for appreciate your work in the area of fine arts, and it's great to hear those reports on those kids and recognizing them. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the recognition of the White County School Board as a Platinum Level Healthier Challenge Award recipient. You may remember last spring, we were presented with a challenge by Ms. Kennard, and we all participated, and evidently we did okay. Mr. D, I'll let you speak to that if you'd like.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna let Ms. Kennard come up. She was influential in that whole process. I just want to say I'm very proud of the board, and not just for earning some money for our school system, but for getting out there, getting healthy. I said I can't tell you how many nights I saw Bob Young walk by my house late at night while I sat on the couch eating ice cream, and I was so proud of our school board and the effort that they put for us to get healthy. And so Marcy would like to, Ms. Kennard would like to acknowledge that as well.
It's okay to call me Marcy. I wanted to say I really appreciate y'all getting on board and doing a little healthy challenge for me so that we could make sure that we had all thirteen boxes checked, because we did have all thirteen boxes checked, and that made me very proud and happy for our school district. There will be an award ceremony at the TSBA conference, and I will get to accept that award, and I think that Mr. McDonald is actually who gets to give it. And we are also getting an eight thousand dollar monetary award, so we'll put that back into our health. And I made y'all boo baskets just to say thank you. And this month has been about doing fun things for our teachers, and I wanted to do something fun for y'all as a thank you and just encourage you to continue to be healthy.
Ms. Kennard, I do want to say one thing to that. Across the state, I'm not sure exactly how many districts there are across the state. The White County is one of seventeen districts across the state that receive Platinum status, so that's the highest level we could get. So congratulations to this board and everybody that put in the effort. So, yeah, I'll be excited to give that coming up in November.
Yep, absolutely. But thank you again. I appreciate it.
Well, Ms. Kennard, before you step down, just want to say thank you for your leadership. We were one of thirteen boxes get checked, and you were doing a lot more work to make this happen, even your staff, I'm sure, promoting health throughout our district, and just really appreciate you looking at that opportunity and taking advantage of it, and for getting recognized. And so look forward to seeing you down in Nashville and receiving that award on our district's behalf. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the fire hall property at Bondicraw. Board members, if you may recall, there's passed a couple of meetings that we were approached by members of the Bondicraw Volunteer Fire Department, specifically Chief Smith, and regarding potential of us deeding that property that where the Bondicraw Volunteer Fire Department resides, deeding that over to them so that they could apply for grants that would help them facilitate some maintenance and projects that they have that they can't apply for currently because they are not the property owners. So we went through a process of having discussion on that the past couple of months, and it was asked to be put on the agenda tonight. So I think board members had some thoughts, comments on this, so I'm gonna open the floor to those that wish to make comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have spoken to many people that live up there on the mountain. Some have called, some have emailed, even had some come by the house. And they are not in favor of this transaction at all. Their concern were just giving the property away. Yes, sir, absolutely, but they were not okay with just the fact of giving it to you all and just leaving the school up there without that property. It's just giving away the property. They were not in favor of that at all. And I think everyone wants to be a good neighbor with you all, but they were just not okay with us just deeding that over. That was not said. I don't believe that was the case. They just were not okay with giving out the property, just giving it away. They know what we know. They know what we know, and I was able to give them the information that I know. That was just several different people that called or emailed or even had one come by the house. I just want to pass that along.
So. So, excuse me just one, for just a moment. Ms. Douglas, appreciate you bringing those comments up. Chief Smith, you were down to speak on public comment. Considering that this is an item we've already been discussing with you regarding this, and we have that on our agenda, I'd just go and recognize you now if there's anything you want us as a board to know. Recognize you, and then board, we can have a discussion after that. So allow you to speak, and then after that, the board will have a discussion. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
I know in the past that we talked about this, and our building. It is maybe a lot of the damage. The reason we're asking that base property is so we can upgrade it. Right here, I have a list of everything that needs to be done for that. And Mr. D, he's come up there and I showed him. When it rains up there, our base floods. It leaks, and it's gonna create a big hazard that could get to the ride line issue. So if it does, we could have a fire at the station. And it burns to the ground. Nobody does that except their lawn system. And, Ms. D, and I understand your concerns, and other people have talked to me and said that it's a good thing for y'all to donate that to us, deed it over, so we can make our upgrades. But until we get that deeded over to us, we cannot get a grant to upgrade our building to the code. If y'all would like to see a list, I have it right here. I know we talked earlier, and y'all said it would be approved. So it's even in fact. I'm just, I'm just.
No. No, Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. And so if you could, if you could, let's have some discussion on board, and if we need to ask you to come back. So, Ms. Douglas, thank you for bringing that up and being part of listening to what's saying from constituents in that area. We did, trying to look back through our minutes quickly on this. We did have this discussion. Chief Smith brought this to our attention a couple of months back. I'm thinking it was August, might have been, might have been July, but I believe it was August. And he brought this to our attention that in order to facilitate grant funding for the facilities, they had to have the property in the fire department's name. Going through that process, we worked out a survey of that that was, that was, that was put together. I think Mr. Markham, the county actually did that or was part of that, developing that survey. And so the plant has been laid out. We agreed to proceed with having that done as a board. But there were also a couple of things that we have to remember that we're gonna have to be satisfied. One of that is having an organization established for which that property can be deeded over. And so there's. so there's, because we cannot just deed it over to an individual, it would have to be entity recognized by the state, 501(c)(3) I think is, that would be done. So there would probably be, even before you could even have a discussion about, you know, voting to approving the transaction from the board's standpoint, that would have to be established. So I'm not sure where that is in the process. But just trying to bring us as a board back up to speed on what has transpired since that time. Mr. D, I'm not sure if you have any updates that you could share with us.
Well, I'm certainly interested in helping our fire departments and especially, you know, we have three properties that share our school property. And I've met with Chief Smith. We have looked at the building. There's needs there. You know, there's some unanswered questions about, you know, what the other fire departments do and what the other fire halls do. And specifically, I would think Castle because they're in a similar situation on our property. And it was my desire, I brought this before the board for your consideration, because I wanna be a good neighbor to those that are helping us. And we've worked well together, Chief Smith and I, you know, we've worked together on the sign. We have a partnership on the road sign up there. You know, we've worked together on, you know, egress and things like that. So we wanna have a good relationship there as those folks, you know, they volunteer and take care of us. But at the same time, wanna make, you know, good business decisions. I don't think anything's changed. I talked to you. I'd heard that there was some conversation of, you know, differing opinions across the board. And, you know, my opinion still is that what we wanna help, even if we can't deed it, I'm already thinking of, okay, well, then how do we help from a county standpoint? If that's our building, you know, can we have equipment? And is there any way to help with our maintenance folks to help some of those things? I mean, like I said, we have equipment, we have work lists, we have, you know, we have tools, we have people. How can we do that in a way that helps that facility if it's on our property, if that's something the board wanna entertain? Even if this doesn't go through like we originally planned, I'm still interested in helping our folks up there. You know, still, the question remains, capital-wise, how are they gonna raise money to significantly make changes there? I know there's an interest and a need to add a bay and some other things up there. Yeah, I wanna do its best for the county. I mean, and if that means helping our volunteer fire department. But we gotta be good stewards of the schools' dollars as well that are generated by students. So I'm just saying I'm open to those things happening if it can't be a truly deeded situation. I'm still interested in helping our volunteer fire department, which is on our property, and, you know, from that perspective. So I know that's a little bit, you know, talking out of each side of my mouth, but I just, whatever the board's process decision is, I'm still interested in helping our volunteer fire departments that are on our property.
You know, the board members have any comments? I mean, as it stands right now, I mean, we approve for this to move forward. Now, there are conditions for which this can move forward that have not been met, to my knowledge, yet, as far as establishing an organization. That would have to be dealt with through the county, I guess, or maybe I'm speaking out of turn here. We would have, before with the county, Mr. Markham, if you wouldn't mind just correcting me or giving me a nod if I'm going the right direction, for the county, which the property that's on, it's part of the school system, yes, but it's also county property as school system, then under the county. The county would not deed any property over to an individual. It would have to go to an organization. So that would have to fall on the fire department, the volunteer fire department, to establish whatever organization you need to function under, that would have to be done before the property can move. So that would be something you have to take care of. I think we have, as far as the plat goes, that's been addressed. But, you know, as far as the county goes, or the property goes with county, I mean, this is really something that the volunteer community, fire department community throughout the county, that and the county administrators need to come together and say, what is the plan for, in my opinion, what is the plan for volunteer fire departments throughout the county? And, you know, we're involved in this because you and also in Central View or in Castle are on our property, because properties are, however they're designed, that's what took place at some point in time. But, you know, if there's a reason why, I mean, I think that there has to, should be some movement on the county's side to help you. Because if, I think if, I don't know if that would address your constituents' concerns, but I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we should not be, the board should not be the ones deciding whether or not you get property to take care of your maintenance. I mean, that needs to be a part of your strategic plan for the fire department and also part of the county. That's my opinion. The reason why we're here is your facility just happens to be located on school property. We have gone through the process of saying, this is the property that we would deed over through the county, say yes. But if we're gonna backtrack on that as a board, then we're gonna have to have that on the agenda item to come back and say, we need to reconsider that. I'm not sure if I'm prepared to have that discussion tonight if we're gonna backtrack on that. So, because this is really the first I've seen, heard of the details of what this agenda item is about. Ms. Smith?
Just a couple of questions. How are the other volunteer fire departments structured? I believe, Mr. Bruce, are you a nonprofit? So the grant you're speaking about, would that cover the entire amount? The only thing standing in the way of the grant is because you don't own the property.
Ms. Douglas?
Chief Smith, is that, is every time that you reply, is that what they tell you, it just because of that very reason that you don't own the building or the property? Or if there's repairs or things like that with the grant, would it work with you in that way? Or is it just because you want a whole new building? I mean, have you tried it by just saying, we need different things fixed? And how's that looked for you? Has that ever?
Chief Smith, I appreciate that comments. And again, recognize Ms. Douglas for sharing these with the community. What I didn't hear in that, in Ms. Douglas, what you shared, is that the community doesn't want a fire department. What I heard was that they concerned about deeding property over, okay? And so as public representatives, we have to consider that, keep that in mind. However, there are other ways that you can get there, maybe rather than deeding property over. But I think a lot of it hinges on you getting completion of your organization established. We won't know when that is, you know, whenever government reopens and whenever you get your final papers from the feds. What I would, board members, what I would like to, what I suggest we do with this is, Ms. Douglas asked that you probably do a little bit more research with those that have expressed their concern to you. And Chief Smith, it might involve some meeting. And it may be that people just don't understand your plan. And I, listen, I get it, you put plans together and sometimes it all gets up here, maybe not get communicated way that people understand it, or they're listening one way and we're talking another. I suggest, suggesting you do that. It just can happen. But maybe it's just a little bit clarity on that, and we understand the reason why there might be another check. But nothing can happen until your organization gets, comes official and put this as an old business item next month, and maybe we can come back with some more information at that time. That's what I'm thinking. Board members, anybody else have a comment on that?
I just have one quick question. What does your fundraising look like? I know Cherry Creek does, their handbrake with North End does. Okay, I didn't know, I don't get on social media a lot, but I don't see, if I'm on social media, I'm looking Marketplace to buy something. So, yeah, social media is awful. But it is good for those type things. I just didn't know what y'all's fundraising looked like and how. Okay, yeah, I know, I mean. Yeah, that was just my question on, you know, all the other, all the other fire departments or organizations in the rest of the state or whatever have fundraising activities. And I just, I hadn't seen anything from the Bondicraft side. Like I said, I'm not a, I'm not a social media guy. So, like I said, social media, I'm not a big social media guy, so, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna say, that's, you know, that's maybe a way that we can partner with you as well. You know, I don't wanna get into Ms. Savage's kitchen, but we could certainly use our facilities, you know, differently. If the school is available to you, you know, for breakfast, and, you know, if you wanna host a basketball tournament, people love that in this town. And, you know, we could utilize the gym. The school could be made available for some of your events so that you guys could spread out and maybe do something bigger and grander to raise some money. So, like I said, regardless if this doesn't happen right now, or we're working towards that, we wanna work together, you know, as you help protect us, we wanna help serve you all. So if there's a way that the schools can work in that meantime, we can talk those things through.
Yes, ma'am.
Like I say, most of our bad weather and our events happen on the mountains where the snow and ice are. Maybe this should be talked up in the community more about, you know, if you're out of power out in the week or providing some kind of shelter for you, people might be getting warm for it because there are several snowstorms. People's been out of power for like weeks and no heat, stuff like that. That would be a good avenue to be promoting it.
So Chief Smith, thank you for sharing that. Appreciate what you and all the volunteers that serve the Bondicraft community do. I think the walk away from our discussion tonight and board's discussion is, nothing can happen as far as any type of property transfer until your organization is fully established. That's one. And second is that from the school standpoint, we want to partner with you to whatever we can do to help you fundraise in the interim before that. So please take advantage of that. We'll just have to wait till, you know, when you get that approval, then we'll set it as an agenda item. And, but as Ms. Douglas said, just do some follow-up on the reason why there's some pushback to that, but.
I think.
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, if not, move down to agenda item number ten, and that's discussion on the Educational Freedom Act, two thousand dollar teacher bonus. Information was provided to you in your packet regarding that. It does seem like that there's some corrections that need to be made on that. So, Mr. D, if you could just give us an update on where we are and what as board we may need to do.
So the, as you remember from past meetings, the Department of Education sent each district a list of what they defined as teachers that would qualify for the bonus under Education Freedom Act. And we were supposed to vet, we vetted that list and sent it back to them. And when they paid it out, there were actually three people that, on that list, that we would have not considered to be under that definition. They worked very hard, we love them, we appreciate them, but they didn't meet that definition as defined by the state. That has sent a little ripple through the district for people that spend similar amounts of time with students as qualified under that definition. And so what I presented to you are an additional thirteen people that I would argue have similar time spent with students each day that would qualify had their names been on that list as well. Those, so what I've shared with you, the three names in green are those that were included in the state's list that would already receive the bonus. The yellow are the third type, equal amounts or comparable amount of time that students would qualify and have ties. And the reds are all.
Okay, so board members, we've been asked to consider approving fifteen hundred dollars for thirteen licensed teachers that, from a workload, they do equal amount of instructional time compared to the three that did meet the state's qualification of a teacher. So we, it's been presented that to equal this out, where there's comparable pay for comparable works and qualifications. Directors recommending that we balance that out by paying them the additional fifteen hundred dollars bonus as we did on the school psychologist. So that's what's being presented to us tonight. So anybody have any questions on what's being asked of us?
I have a question. So there's twenty-seven other names on that list that spend as much or if not more time. So there's 27 other names on that list, um, that spend as much or if not more time in front of students as some of these other folks. And they're the ones that are in the front lines every day. Um, I would like to see us take care of all of these folks. Last month, we, we approved a budget item last month, it was $178,000 and we never batted an eye at it. Um, that was missed during budget times. If my dull math is correct, $1,500 a piece for 40 folks is $60,000. Um, I'd like to make a motion that those 13 people that were listed in yellow be, uh, be given the $1,500, but I would also like to see, uh, the 27 other folks in the school administration, principals, assistant principals, uh, and then the district level and folks that are in red as well, uh, be, uh, given that money as well.
All right, um, appreciate that, Ms. McDonald. I'm gonna ask for, for clarity that we first address what was presented to us, um, for consideration. And that is addressing the 13 end of, uh, 13, uh, employees, uh, that would qualify for the, uh, similar, similar qualifications as those, uh, school psychologists that, uh, that were paid the bonus. Um, I would like for us to, uh, first take, take, uh, make a decision on that, um, make a motion on that. And then if we come back to the discussion portion, Ms. McDonald, you can restate what it is and we'll try to get, get all this in a, in a, the proper motion, but let's, let's first consider these first 13 that were recommended to us, so. Uh, we have, uh, 13 counselors, uh, one district level employee, excuse me, 12 coun- uh, counselors and coaches, one district level, uh, employee that qualified for the $2,000 bonus, uh, that was, uh, provided, uh, through the state guidelines for the, uh, $2,000. They have already been paid, uh, $5,000 bonus, so the recommendation is that we, I'm sorry, what did I say? Five, I'm sorry, Freudian slip. Um, $500, um, so we would be paying them an additional, uh, $1,500 to run them up to a total of $2,000. So, uh, first, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to approve, uh, paying these 13 individuals the additional $1,500 as presented. Motion by Mr. Smith, do have a second. Second by Ms. Stone. All right, discussion. Mr. McDonald, I'm gonna go back to you.
Okay, so, looking at this list, um, every one of those school administrators have a teacher's license. I'm gonna venture out and say that everybody on this list of district level, with the exception of maybe Mr. Alley, does he have a teaching license? Okay, I didn't know that. So I'm gonna venture out to say that everybody on this list, all 27 of those folks that are listed in red have a teacher's license. They went to school for it, they, they put their effort into it, I think they deserve it. I think we need to make, all of these folks, and they, none of them's asked for it, but I, I think we need to make these folks feel wanted, appreciated, and I just think it's the right thing to do. Um, that's just my feeling.
Mr. D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I certainly want to echo that and I've been on the record before saying that I can make an argument that our principals are the most influential instructional leaders in the building, uh, and my job would not be possible without the fantastic people in this room that are my supervisors, that I would, uh, that would, I would fight you tooth and nail for. They certainly are deserving. There are a couple of names on this list that are no longer with us, um, so that would reduce that a couple and I'm certainly not gonna in, endorse myself getting a, a bonus, I hope my wife's not watching, um, but I am, um, but I'm not gonna suggest that I get it. But for, for these people, I appreciate your support and I'd certainly would applaud them receiving that. But I do want to make the point too, that when this list was originally created, the definition by the state, really what this was, or at least what it came from the state saying was, it was about classroom teachers and the amount of money that they were spending out of their pockets to buy supplies. And that's usually, even though all of us buy things for students and for, and for our teachers and things, but that's where, that, that was the, the spirit of that, uh, the initial, um, verbiage, so just want to make that point, thank you.
So even though there's maybe a couple of names that's not on this list, or that's on this list, this reverts back to last year's contract if I'm not mistaken. So wouldn't they also still receive that money as well?
We, we have not been in the, usually in the case of, of chasing those down if they're no longer with us, uh, just like we don't give people increases, salary increases if they've left, we don't give them the difference that they would have received if they were still with us, so that's not been our precedent, but, um. Yes, it's good, but, no, I understand your question.
Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, so I'm gonna step out on a limb right here because you've got school nurses. If we're gonna start this right here, then you've got school nurses that have a degree and they see students when they come in. And I know principals aren't with them all the time and I love every one of our principals and the people that work up here. But if you're gonna step out on a limb and we're gonna start spending money, then you're gonna have to get everybody. Because if we keep on throwing money, our savings is gonna dwindle down, we gotta stop somewhere.
Mr. Chairman. Smith.
I, I agree with you, Ms. Fowler, um, the, the names in red here, all very highly capable, important people to the education system. My concern is, like Ms. Fowler, she mentioned nurses, who else are we missing that would also be worthy, uh, in, in this category of recognition of the value they bring? Uh, I, I think we're going out on a limb, um, a little too far in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, um, board members, as you're maybe gathering your thoughts, just let me remind you that, uh, the, uh, uh, teacher bonus was part of the Education Freedom, uh, Act that was approved last, uh, spring by the legislature and, and they, they provided guidance for what that, they said, here's how much money we're gonna pay to these individuals meeting these qualifications. And they, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. D, did they not set based on the size of your district, the number of certain positions that you should have? Or am I thinking of something else? Okay, we'll scratch that. But they did set the, um, criteria for those who, who would qualify for this particular money. They didn't come ask us if that was, if it was okay, if we thought our opinion on, uh, who should get the money and how to spirit of just appreciating all those in our district that make education possible, uh, it's obviously the, the spirit and heart of the board that we would love to, we recognize everybody, but the state didn't. State said, we're gonna fund this group of people and it left, it was specific on who it, who qualified and who, who did not. Um, if you if you continue to add to this, uh, this number, then you probably need to consider, uh, having a fiscal review on that. Should not just, uh, arbitrarily on one board meeting on one Thursday night, um, uh, make that kind of decision. Uh, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate what you, uh, what you, uh, mentioned on our, regarding our budget that was left off, that budget item that we approved last month that was left off, but if I'm not mistaken, that, uh, that item was part of the overall edu- operation of the education system that we occur on annual basis. And so, and so it's, this is a very special circumstance, um, that again, as Mr. D said, we're, appreciate the state for giving us the opportunity to work through this. Um, so if you if any board member wishes to amend the motion, uh, then you have the opportunity to make a motion that be seconded. We would have a discussion to amend the motion that's on the floor, but the motion on the floor right now is to approve, uh, the 13, uh, counselors, coaches that qualify for the, uh, uh, that meet the requirements set by the state to receive a $2,000 bonus rather than the 500 bonus that, dollar bonus that we, we gave them. Uh, the motion is to approve those 13 individuals that were, uh, that has, has been recommended to us, uh, by the, by the director. So if you want to.
I do, Mr. Chair, I want to make an amendment to this motion and I first want to start that off by thanking our state legislature for putting us in this position of pitting people against people, uh, pitting administrators and district level employees against teachers who got a bonus. So I, I want to first thank those folks first and foremost on the record, uh, for, for putting us in this position, um, trying to get their, their, their agenda passed. It's worked, it's worked on their end, so my amendment would be to include these 27 other folks, um, into this bonus structure of paying them $1,500, um, just like we are gonna do the 13.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor to include. Okay, um, have a motion on the floor to include, um, those on the certified personnel list not receiving a bonus on the state list to include s- uh, school administrators. 16 school administrators. And 11 district level employees that would meet the requirements for, uh, as defined by the state as an educator. So I have a motion to amend, um, to include those individuals on the, um, district level file that was presented to us. And Ms. Sims, if this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe there's a couple on that there that is no longer in the system, would that include, uh, I think it's Darla Dunn and Barry To- Larry Thompson?
Okay.
Is him the only two that's, that's not in the district now?
Yes, I think that's correct. Okay, so that would be nine district level administrators. All right, seven, motion for to in, include those individuals, do I have a second?
Those folks were employed by us last year, I just, I feel like those need to stay in there.
So your motion included them, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, uh, 27 total.
All right.
16 and 11.
All right, I have a motion to include the, um, the 27 total school administrators and district level staff meeting those requirements, uh, qualifying for the, uh, for the definition of a state educator, uh, based on the Education Freedom Act of 2024, uh, excuse me, 2025, uh, have a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay, motion to amend fails for not receiving a second, so we'll go back to, uh, motion to approve, uh, the 13 administrators as presented, uh, that meet the state qualifications, educators, um, from the Education Freedom Act of 2025. Uh, have a motion and, and a second, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is discussion of snow days, snow day pay for staff. So, Mr. D, would you, uh, like to speak to that?
Sure. So we, uh. Oh, I'm sorry, the school board, uh, has addressed this a couple of times in the past, most notably over the summer. Um, in the past, we have, uh, for our support staff, particularly, you know, when we talk about that, we were talking about our educational assistants. Um, they do not get paid on snow days, there is no work for them on snow days. And in order to make up some of that money or some of that law, lost revenue, the board has allowed them to make up to five days worth of snow time. So even though we might have missed 10 days, at least they didn't miss 10 days of work, they were able to make up five. The way that we've done that though, over the years, is to allow them to work right now, today, they worked a little bit after school and then they banked that time and then when the board, it would, that 15 extra minutes over the course of the entire 180 days is about five point something days. I think it's actually 6.2 is what it amounts to, but, um, that's where we've done that in the past. Um, but that's really problematic, that's really not correct accounting procedures, um, it's, it's really hard to keep up with who's worked that time, who didn't work that time, and then in a lot of cases, I know with cafeteria staff trying to do that as well, it's been hard to find work for them to do to make up that much time, it's a lot of time over the course of the year, so. Without a real, uh, course of action from the board this summer, we made the decision, or I made the decision, to pay people their extra 15 minutes right now. So as they're work, they are working extra and we need them to work after school because it takes everybody in a village to get students into the school and out of the school each day. And so we made the decision to pay them right now, so the extra 15 minutes that they've been working in the past, they're getting paid for it on their check right now. But as it stands right now, because we're paying them for that, they're not banking it, so if we miss 10 snow days this year, those 10 snow days will come off of their, deducted from their checks at the end of the year, in the summer. Because they've spread their pay over 24 pay periods, so instead of getting that money at that time, we're gonna have to deduct it at the end because we don't know how many snow days we're gonna use, so, but let's say we use 10, we're gonna deduct 10 and that means they probably won't get a whole paycheck on that last paycheck. So that's where we are right now, that's why we've explained it to our staff, so there's, right now, there's no mechanism for making up snow days. They're getting paid right now for the 15 minutes that they were getting to bank for in the past. So what I really want to do right now is just give the board information to think that perhaps if the board wants to make any changes or I'll recommend some things over the next month, then you could come back and decide if you want to make any other changes. But that would really be the last time this year to do it because after that, it may snow. And so we, we would be into that, into that business. Um, so we have some options and I will share those with the board individually, I'll share them with you in, in updates and give you some things to think about. We estimate, uh, it's, I've given you the numbers, it's about $35,000 a day that it costs for this staff that I'm talking about. Um, and so that's 35,000, 35,000 a day that if it snows, that if they don't work, that we're putting in the bank. And so that's, that's how we get that money at the end of the year that we put back into our fund balance. We have options of paying that out, there are some districts that just pay people not to work that day. It's always been a, it's always been problematic for me because we have maintenance people that have to work a lot of times, that's the best time to get in and fix maybe a pipe burst, they have to go in and work, so it's hard for me to, I can't say to educational assistants, you get paid to stay home when other people have to get, have to go to work. Um, so, uh, custodians work, that sort of thing. There is an option for us to split the difference and say, you know, they get half pay or something for snow days, uh, and everybody stays home on half pay, but obviously maintenance would be on call, uh, you know, custodians if something happened would be on call, that sort of thing. Or we can leave it alone and people just need to budget and know that at the end of the year, um, they're gonna be deducted, so. I just want the board to understand where we are, there, right now, there is no mechanism for making up snow days. They're getting paid right now for the time that they're working and they will be paid all year long for the time that they're working. Um, but if it snows, uh, and I'm gonna, and that's why I try, I, you know, I know I get a lot, you, you, that's, you know, being a, it's like being a referee on snow days, you, you make people happy, you make people mad, but I try not, I try to go to school, that's our job, is go to school every day, so I am a little, uh, stingy about that. But I'm also looking out for people that don't get paid and I'm looking out for kids that don't get to eat and so, uh, we, we try and go to school when we can. Um, I do have some other options this year with some virtual days, there are some things that we can do that we can count as school days and they would still get paid and I'll try and. still get paid, and I'll try and utilize those as well. Um, but I'm just trying not to get in the pocketbooks of people, but I'm still trying to be safe and be out of school when it's dangerous to go to school. So really, just information. I will share more ideas with you. Um, there's really no action the board has to take on it, but as we consider, um, those people that are missing out on a lot of money because it snowed, uh, just want to give the board some information and options.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. In, uh, in years past, we have, um, as a board, forgiven five days, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. So those five days are, would those be in, in of addition to the six point two that they're already working? Or how, how will that work in the, in the long run?
I mean, the board could do that again, but there's just, they're working it right now and getting paid for it right now. So if the board just wanted to say, hey, we're just going to give everybody five days, you could do that, but they're not going to work for that time because they're already working the minutes now, so they're not banking them. And there probably wouldn't be time at that point to make up that many hours if we decided in, after the season, say in, in March or April, that you make that decision. There's not enough time in the, in the year for them to make up five days. So that would be a true forgiveness and pay, and, and just straight out payment that the board would make.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussions for our director regarding snow day pay for staff?
Just one, the staff that this affects, they know there is a chance when they get into May and June, their paycheck could be less. That's, that's been made...
Yeah, we've communicated that, and I'm, I'm not sure if that's resonated or not. I, I, we've delivered that message to our principals and principals meetings, and we've shared that out. So, um, you know, they, they understand that we've changed their hours, that they're getting paid extra fifteen minutes, and this is why. I know, I don't, if you can confirm that, Ms. Ryan, that we've shared that with our staff, so they know that. I, I don't know if that's going to sink in until May, but we, we have communicated to our, to our personnel, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions, discussions on snow days? Thank you for that information, Mr. D. Uh, next, we'll move on to, uh, agenda item number twelve. Uh, it has been requested that we consider renaming the Finley Gym, uh, recognizing Coach Rhonda Gerdly, who has taught in our school system for over fifty years. And, uh, think that we, uh, have the, uh, the, uh, individual who is making this recommendation to us here with us tonight, and that's, uh, Mr. Rebecca Ryan, principal of, uh, Finley. So Ms. Ryan, if you'd like to come address the board?
I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak. Um, I am Rebecca Ryan, I'm the principal of Finley, Finley Elementary. I've been there for nine years. Um, Ms. Gerdly, I'm sure most everyone in the room knows who I'm talking about when I mention Ms. Gerdly. She's synonymous with Finley. She started teaching in Finley in nineteen seventy-seven. She just finished her fiftieth year. Um, she taught kindergarten all fifty years, and I think Mr. Whitaker moved her to third grade once and quickly moved her right back to kindergarten, is what she told me. Um, she's right now currently coaching her forty-fourth basketball season as elementary basketball coach, um, at Finley. Uh, just beat Woodland Park about two minutes ago, so our crosstown rival. Um, I just think that, um, no one will ever probably be able to match Ms. Gerdly's dedication to the students at Finley and especially the basketball program. I think she even helped coach the boys' team for quite some time. Um, she was one of the first people that I met when I came to White County, um, a little over twenty years ago, and, and welcomed to me. She was my mentor as I coached the high school softball team and, and helped coach at the high school, uh, the basketball team as well. So just known Ms. Gerdly for a long time. I've tried to go back and find some statistics on how many times she's won the county tournament or how many wins and losses she has, but, um, forty-four years of basketball is hard to track. So I've not really been able to come up with that. Currently, our gym floor is named after Kelly Jolly Harper. It's Kelly Jolly Harper Court. Um, and of course, that's probably Ms. Gerdly's, um, uh, former player that she's most proud of, so I think that she would be honored for the gym to be named after her. And so, um, I spoke with Mr. Osbaugh, he was a former principal as well. Um, he has some ideas as well, and, and he and I kind of discussed this together before I, I made my request, but, um, that is what I am requesting tonight, is that we name the gym the Rhonda Gerdly Gymnasium.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Appreciate that. Um, board members, it is, uh, within our purview to, uh, uh, address the facilities, uh, naming. Uh, Board Policy twenty-three-ten, uh, states that facilities, school system shall be made through, uh, named through board action based upon the following criteria. And in this situation, it would, uh, it would be, uh, named for, uh, those that have, uh, that have contributed to, bear with me one second, uh, and a living person provided that he or she has made an outstanding contribution to that school. And that would be what this, uh, recommendation is being based on. Um, and if, uh, if we do just, uh, decide, um, that that's, uh, to, that to be renamed, um... So the, uh, the policy states that, uh, school facility, that the director shall submit the recommendation, which he did on behalf of, uh, Ms. Ryan, to the board after seeking input from school, school personnel and the public. So, uh, Mr. D., Ms. Ryan, I guess, uh, could, calling you as well, uh, just if you could give us an update on, uh, what that is, uh, what your, your responses has been?
So I got that response from Ms. Ryan. She's, you know, talked with her faculty, I think, and they've discussed that, and she said she's reached out to people in the public as well. I don't know at that survey, if, if they've been formally surveyed, um, but I know she's talked to, as she said, uh, former principals and, um, and other administrators. And, um, you know, I certainly think Ms. Gerdly's made a significant contribution to the school and to our community, and I can't think of anybody else that would be worthy of that honor. Um, so I don't think, and I think so the thousands of people that have been under her tutelage and, and, uh, and, uh, and on her, on her teams over the years would, would respond in kind. But, oh, like I said, I don't know that we have a formal survey, but I think everyone that, and it's been a part of, it's a part of our district now and has been, uh, under her leadership that would agree with that.
Thank you. Board members have, uh, comments?
Mr. Chair, I would, uh, think that there's no better person to name that gymnasium after, so I'm gonna, uh, in a formal motion, a formal, formal motion, uh, before this board, uh, seek that we name the Finley Gymnasium the Rhonda Gerdly Gymnasium, um, in honor of Ms. Gerdly's contribution to, uh, Finley Elementary School over the last fifty years and, uh, the last forty-four coaching basketball.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. So I have a motion to, uh, approve naming of the Finley Elementary Gym, uh, in honor of Ms. Rhonda Gerdly. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Fowler. Discussion?
The other areas or facilities that have been named, um, is the same process used? For example, Donnie Haley's name is on the facility and football field. Dee Harris's name is on the football field. So what process went to get those names? Was it this policy as well?
Um, can't speak to that for when those, uh, facilities were named, but it would have followed the policy because that is, uh, uh, there are state statutes providing that. So it would follow this policy or a similar policy?
I can answer to, um, the softball facility, um, was followed through this, uh, in honor of, of Mr. Buckshot Simms. So it was brought before this board, uh, to name that after him. So, yeah, I think we're doing the right thing.
The, the policy method in which we're doing this is correct. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just one, one more comment. When, when you say the name, Ms. Gerdly, can you hear her yelling at you? Or yelling at your child? Yep, there we go. There we go.
I, I changed my mind.
[laughing]
My only comment says if, if it's not named for Ms. Rhonda Gerdly, then it would go unnamed. So, um, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. Here none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Ms. Sims, I need to backtrack for just a second. Please note, and Ms. Officer, uh, please confirm that on the, uh, agenda item number six, discussion of the EFA, uh, two thousand dollar teacher bonus, um, motion that was approved and passed, that Ms. Officer did, uh, recuse herself from that vote. Make sure that's, she did not vote. Just make sure that's in the minutes. Thank you. All right. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we are honored to have tonight our newest member of the board. Uh, as you know, that, uh, White County School Board, uh, allows for student representatives to be a part of our board, and we, um, have a junior, uh, uh, school board member and a se- junior representative school board member and a senior representative school board member from White County High School. And, uh, tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Callie O'Dell. Callie is, uh, eleventh grader at the high school, and she is going to be here, this is her first meeting, and she's going to be delivering to us, uh, the student representative report. So, Ms. O'Dell, I'll recognize you tonight.
Much. I am excited to share some highlights from this month at the high school. October has been very busy, but very successful for our students, teachers and staff. Um, from academics to school spirit, there's been a lot of progress and participation across the campus. Um, so I'm going to start with our academic portion. We recently took the practice ACTs juniors, and it went very well. Um, I interviewed some students, and they were very satisfied. We got our scores back probably two days after. Very satisfied with our results. Um, a helpful factor that many of the kids mentioned is that we have a third block ACT prep class that rotates, um, every three weeks throughout the subjects that are on the ACT. Um, they shared that the class just gave them more confidence and helped them to better understand the structure of the test. Um, one junior told me, and I quote, "That class has helped me to focus on the areas that I need to improve. I like that my teacher showed us how to break down the problems, and it made the test feel more manageable." Many felt that having dedicated time during the school day to practice made a noticeable difference in their performance on the test. Um, our administration has done an excellent job of emphasizing the importance of the ACT and the opportunities that the scores will provide for students if they choose to pursue their higher education. Speaking of higher education, College Application Week was a hit very recently. Um, many of our seniors chose to apply to local schools such as Tennessee Tech, Montlo, Ball State and nearby TCAC campuses. Um, seniors expressed that the most helpful part of the week was the hands-on support that they received, and having guidance through each step of the process made it much less stressful and more approachable. Um, Ms. Suzanne Rushing and the new AERS Foundation team have been extremely helpful in assisting seniors and making sure that this process remains as smooth as possible for them. Outside the classroom, students have also been busy getting involved in clubs and activities with Beta Club leading the way. Um, select members of the Beta Club are preparing to attend the Beta Convention at the Gaylord Opryland Resort and Convention Center in Nashville this November. Thanks to our club sponsor, Ms. Laurel Farley, our club has continued to grow into what it is meant to be, um, which recognizes high academic achievement, fosters personal growth and integrity, and develops leadership skills while also inspiring all of the Beta members to serve their schools and our community. Um, I would also like to recognize our twenty-twenty-five Beta Officers who were selected through professional interview processes. Um, the president is Senior Olivia Hart, upperclassman vice president is me. Um, underclassman vice president is sophomore Summer Phillips. The secretary is, um, Senior Addie Coke. Um, treasurer is Senior Langley Austin. Historian is Junior Katie Eller. Community outreach officer is, um, Senior Harley Young. Communications officer is Junior Tori Maeve, and the senior coordinator officer is Estee Willis. Um, beyond academics and club activities, students have really shown their school spirit throughout Homecoming Week this week. As you guys know, the parade has happened this, today. Um, Student Council has worked very hard over the past few weeks to ensure that this year's homecoming will be the best one that we've had yet, and students have shown tremendous school spirit and participation in the Alice in Wonderland themed dress-up days. Um, and the costumes have been outstanding. This week's activities provided something fun for everybody. Monday, we had volleyball. Tuesday, there was dodgeball. Wednesday, there was rock, paper, scissors all day, and at the end of the day, um, the winner with the most beads got a Taco Bell gift card. There's also supposed to be lunch on the lawn that day, but there was bad weather, so it got canceled. Um, today, we had a car and tractor show and sponsored by FFA, and then tomorrow, we have a big pep rally in our homecoming game versus DeKalb County. Um, after such an exciting and busy month, it's important to recognize all our teachers and staff who made it happen. I'd like to recognize and thank our teachers, administration and staff for their continued dedication this month. From providing targeted ACT support to organizing College Application Week and coordinating Beta Club activities, their hard work has made these successes possible. Um, a special thanks to Ms. Rushing, Ms. Farley and the AERS Foundation team for their tireless work to support seniors, Beta members and juniors as we move into the next part of the semester. Um, the students will carry that same motivation and support into what's ahead. Next week marks the start of our fall break, which everybody is very eagerly anticipating. Um, after the break, we will return, ready to dive back into coursework and to begin parent, preparing for our end-of-course exams and other midterms. Um, the Beta members look forward to their convention, and all the other student clubs and organizations will begin planning their holiday events and community service projects. Um, school spirit remains strong, and students continue to stay motivated both academically and socially as we move into our second half of our semester. So that's everything that we have this month, and thank you for letting me share what's been going on. We're really trying to make the most of this semester.
Thank you, Ms. O'Dell. Um, any questions and comments for Ms. O'Dell, our student representative?
Mr. Chair, I, I want to, I just want to commend our administrators at the high school for picking such quality individuals who, who started this program, all the way back to Mr. Simmons and, and Ms. McGill, Ms. Sackett, and now Ms. O'Dell. I know Mom and, and Amos are, are very excited. I want you to know that y'all have done a very good job. Dad, Scott has done a good job raising these, uh, these kids. So, uh, i- it's just a blessing to see such well-spoken kids in our school system making a difference. So thank you, Ms. O'Dell.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I just appreciate the report, Ms. O'Dell, and thoroughness and just all that things going on at the, at the high school level, and, and that's awesome to hear. I do appreciate you pointing out something that, uh, in your report about the improvements in the AT, ATC scoring, um, and the testing training. Uh, I know that over the past years, um, that has been one of the objectives for high school to improve ATCs, AT, ACT scores, excuse me, um, and...
She's hard to follow, isn't she?
Pardon?
She's hard to follow.
She, well, listen, yes, everybody's hard to follow for me. Um, the, um, but, uh, that was something several years ago that we look to improve and taken seriously on trying to, trying to make some advancements in that and the testing that goes on at junior level. Um, appreciate, appreciate that. So it's great to hear that, that scores are improving, and if you look at that over the several years, those, uh, that is taking place to, so again, yes, thanks to administrators for making that happen. Any other comments for our student representative report? Okay. Uh, if not, then we'll move on to our district, uh, update. Uh, Mr. Strombarger, turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief. I'm looking forward to inviting, um, our Sheila Felton, our, uh, federal program supervisor. She's going to come and help out and present with me this evening and tonight. But, uh, uh, first of all, just want to tell you, fall break is upon us. Fall break for White County Schools is next week, October thirteenth through seventeenth. Seems, uh, to be coming at a good time, as many folks appear to be needing a little time and space. Uh, personnel report are in your folders. Uh, I'm glad to say that this time, we're fully staffed with qualified personnel on our bus routes and in our classrooms. Legislatively, after the break, preparation will begin for the upcoming legislative session. Both school board and I will be at conferences and meetings in the coming weeks concerning possible legislative changes. Uh, health and safety, we've extended our partnership with Navigate Three-Sixty to include positive behavior support initiatives for all schools to assist with school culture and to incentivize good school behavior. Financially, as you've heard, we're, uh, have a good financial report. The district finances are in good shape and on track for this time of year. Athletically, the White County football team, White County High School football team is ranked ninth in the state in Class Four-A, and will play at home Friday night against the DeKalb County Tigers. Go Warriors! Uh, building projects, the, the walls are going up at Doyle. Several trees have been removed from the playground for safety reasons. Uh, new HVAC equipment being installed in the vocational building next week, so those are the big building projects right now. Uh, academically, a- as I said, at this time, I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Sheila Felton, our federal program supervisor. She's here to discuss our TESA accountability report. Thank you, Ms. Felton.
And I know this board isn't situated good. Y'all need to stand up, move around. It feels good to stand up and move around, so you may want to do that. good to stand up and move around, so you may wanna do that. Um, TESA accountability report, you have thirty-one pages of the actual report in your packet. I've got it in nine slides for you. First off, the reason why we do this, you know, TESA's new funding, this is a mandated report we do. Um, there are some things that must be included. The first one says goals for student achievement. The next one, one goal must be about third grade ELA. We have to explain how our goals can be met within our budget. We have to describe how our, how the previous year's expenditures helped to meet those goals. And the last box over there, this report has to be up for public review and comment. It has to be approved by the school board tonight, so I'll need that to be done when I get finished, and then I can submit it by November the first. Five goals on this. The first one, it has to be third grade ELA. Our second goal is fourth grade ELA to English Two. The third goal is third grade math to integrated math Three, so that covers all the ELA, all the math. Um, goal four is ready graduate in ACT, so some news that will go right along. And then we have a fifth goal this year, this is a new goal, I'll explain that in a minute, is college and career readiness. All right, how are we making progress? The first goal is ELA for third grade. We set, this report was first done in twenty-twenty-three. We set the goal that fifty-three percent of our third graders need proficient by twenty-twenty-eight. This whole thing started, it was a five-year plan from twenty-three to twenty-eight. We had a goal that fifty-three percent would be proficient. If you look in that middle box, if the progress made, spring of twenty-twenty-five, we hit fifty-three point one percent, so we hit our twenty-twenty-eight goal in twenty-twenty-five. So at the end, we had to set a new goal, so we just added two percent to that, um, to make fifty-five percent in the spring of this school year. And at the bottom line, it tells you the amount of TESA funds. That's right at eight million, so that's all that counts. Everyone that influenced third grade ELA, so we start with pre-K, first, second, third grade teachers, administrators, everybody that had an impact, that was their total salary. The next goal, if third grade ELA, we went to fourth grade everybody ELA up to English Two. Um, we've got the grade level, um, the goal that we had for this past school year or actual, but I want to look you at, have you look at the last column. We exceeded or met every one of those goals except for two. Seventh grade ELA did not meet it by point six, six tenths, and English One did not meet it by two tenths. So we were very close. So out here on the bottom, we met or exceeded five out of those seven targets that we made. Uh, the amount expended was right at twelve and a half billion, so that gets all, or million. Uh, that gets all the people that influenced pre-K all the way up to English Two. The next goal is math. So again, we have all of our grade levels and subjects over here. Again, look at that last column. Exceeded, 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 exceeded. We go down through there, there's only two that was not met, was integrated math one and integrated math two. Um, we met it in integrated math three, exceeded. And again, down here, seven out of those nine, we either met or exceeded, and we have a little over thirteen million of the salaries that went toward influencing that goal. Talking about ACT, this deals with our next one. We have ready graduate and ACT. For both of these, we exceeded the goal. This is like third grade. We exceeded the goal that we set for twenty-twenty-eight. So down here on the bottom left, what we've done is we've removed this goal. We met it three years early, so we're past that. We've moved, removed that goal. A couple of reasons for that, ready graduate status is no longer gonna be reported, and ACT actually rolls into goal five that we did, and there's the TESA funding amount spent, and that's basically everybody in the district because pre-K on up affects getting ready graduate by ACT. And then our new goal is college and career readiness. Um, we set this goal brand new for this year, that seventy-one percent of the high school graduates will achieve the CCR, college and career readiness, by getting one of the following. Now, the first one's the ACT score, so that kinda includes what we had on goal four, uh, post-secondary placements, industry credentials, and then ASVAB for military readiness. So that is our brand-new goal, so next year, that will be reported on how we did toward meeting that goal. And we set that goal based off what the previous year was and added a percent to that to get to fifty, or seventy-nine. Um, you have the full report, and it is available, posted on each school's website. Uh, there's a link that you can see the full report, can make public comment on it. Um, there's also an action plan for how we met each one of those goals, how we're, what we're gonna be doing, like tutoring, uh, things like that to meet those goals. Um, and then in that plan is also goals all the way up to twenty-twenty-eight. So we have the current year goal plus going forward to twenty-twenty-eight. And that's it. Now I need you to be approved, and we can submit that to the state. We'll leave it open for a time window for um public com, public comment on it. Um, we have received a couple of comments. Um, so far, it's kinda related to you over test. We agree with that, but the state didn't ask us that. The state asked us to report on how we've done. So uh, there you are in a nutshell for thirty-one pages. Did I do okay?
Ms. Felton, you did, you did outstanding. Thank you. Um, this uh is accountability for TESA funding, so this, you, we started this in twenty-twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're in academic year three of reporting. Uh, we expect this to continue on as long as the state's funding us under the TESA model, um, and far as accountability and your time results to the actual dollars spent uh in that report. So overall, we, this is, this is um, this is the world we live in, balancing out uh accountability for funding and educational.
The amount of funding that was spent and how we made progress.
So um, great results. Uh, this probably should be something that is published, uh, so and sometimes it takes more than one vehicle to get that information out, so please consider that. Uh, great results. It's also interesting to note how some of the goals that were, areas that were not met, were met in the seventh grade period and the uh, uh, seventh grade uh level and the freshman level. Uh, so I don't know if that has anything to do with just development of kids, but uh it's uh, it was, it's great to see the developments that were, that were made otherwise, so.
And I'll be sharing this tomorrow. We have our principals meeting. I've got this link in the principals update that they get, so then they can share that out with the faculty as well, because it is a great shout-out to all the work that everyone does in our district.
Great. Um, board members, any uh, any more comments on the TESA accountability report? Uh, given by Ms. Felton?
Just one question and a comment. Very nicely done. Um, very impressive scores. How did you set the goals, the original goals?
We worked off prior year goals and added two. Um, every year, we have to do a district plan, and it correlates, we made the TESA report correlate with district plan, and rightfully so, because they're fixing to revamp our entire district plan format to make us do, but we've already done that. So um, it's just a plan. Every spring, we get together and make a plan for the next year, and it follows right along with that.
Chairman Smith, any other questions, comments? So uh, Ms. Felton, your, your answer approved the report uh as, as you presented it, nothing specific other than just uh proving your plan that you'll be submitting to the state, that we also, also included in, in our packet. So all right, board members, have a motion to approve the TESA planning accountability report by Mr. McDonald. Have a second by Ms. Stone. Any other discussion? Okay, here and none. All those in favor, signify the same aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The minutes and the, that will be uploaded in the document as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for our director regarding the district update? Okay, if not, uh, that leads us down to the next agenda item, and that's public comment. Um, Chief Smith was given the opportunity to speak. Uh, he was signed up on our uh sheet for tonight, but he was given the opportunity to speak when the uh item on, he wished to discuss was on the agenda. Uh, and since we'd had that in previous business, we allowed him to speak then. Uh, no other sign-ups for, uh, on our public comment for tonight. So that leads us to new business items, and think we have uh a new business item we need to address. Get back to that page.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll, I will step in there. This, we did have a late request for a uh field trip request form from White County High School and Middle School Tennis. Uh, they would like to take their tennis teams uh November thirteenth to sixteenth, and we would, we would need that approval before our next meeting, so that's why they've asked for us to do that now. Uh, but they're going to be volunteering at the National Wheelchair Tennis Championships in McDonough, Georgia. Uh, so they're gonna take about fifteen students down there in uh some vans. They'll have chaperones with them, and they'll have chaperones on a one-to-five ratio. They will be serving as ball persons, refreshment monitors, court monitors, and anything else needed to help with the National Wheelchair Tennis Championships. And so they're seeking approval for that overnight travel and out-of-state travel in November.
Okay, board members, we've been asked to approve overnight travel for the White County Middle School tennis to, uh, tennis team to go uh serve at the USTA Wheelchair uh Championship in uh McDonough, Georgia uh next month. Uh, so to have a motion for approval.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Have a second. Second by Ms. Fowler. Um, any discussion?
For uh, for the public uh information, um, tennis team, we did approve this trip uh last year for the twenty-twenty-four uh middle school tennis uh team to go down and participate in the championships. Uh, and we, uh, there was an email received to uh to Coach Wiles uh from uh the USTA tennis officials. Uh, just like to share that with you. Says, uh, uh, "My name is uh Melody Lucas. I'm one of the many uh USTA officials. I've been working as official for fifteen years. Had the pleasure of working with Topher Wiles and his crew of exceptional young men at the National Wheelchair Championship this past week for four days. Had the pleasure of working with all of his crew on the court for long hours in some challenging situations. All of his young men showed exceptional knowledge of tennis and rules and willingness to work, uh, to work. They were ball boys, ball retrievers, and just fun to work with. I could not have asked for a nicer, more respectful group of young men. Uh, I thank them for all they did. I'm sure they will grow to be outstanding young men. I hope they get some well-deserved rest because they worked hard without complaining." Uh, so uh, we appreciate that. Uh, it's great to know that our, our students and our, our athletic teams, wherever they're at, are representing our, our county well, and so appreciate that. Congratulations to last year's team, and also wish this year's team uh best luck in their volunteer service. So appreciate that, and uh had a motion for
Motion and a second.
So uh, board members, all those in favor uh for approving this uh overnight trip, please signify the same aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, that is the only new business item. Uh, there are no items on old business, so that leads us to uh, uh, one of the last items on our agenda. That's chairman's comments. Our next school board meeting will be November sixth, twenty-twenty-five, here at the Board of Education. Uh, our spotlight will be on Bondi Croft, recognizing those that are involved in fine arts. Uh, so uh, with that, uh, next item on our agenda is adjournments. So here, entertaining motion for adjournment. Motion by Ms. Fowler, second by Ms. Stone. Any, all in favor? Thank you. Appreciate you, uh, everyone being here tonight.